Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this School Board Candidate Forum, presented by the media of Aspen. I am David Kraus, the editor of the Aspen Times, and I am joined in moderating this evening with Daily News Editor Curtis Whackerly. We'd like to take a quick minute to thank our partners at Grassroots TV for airing this forum and making it available online afterward if anybody can't watch the whole thing or would like to relive the moments.
(laughter)
And we'd also like to thank Pitt County for the use of the chambers this evening as very helpful for us and to get the information out. So, thank you to the Pitt County B.O.C.C. And we would like to thank you, the six candidates, for joining us tonight, for taking the time. Katie Frisch, John Galambos, Jonathan Nickel, Jim Pomeroy, Bettina Slusar, Patty Kirkoulis. And we have watched the past two forums put on by the school district and the Aspen Education Foundation. Our goal tonight is to advance those and bring more to the voters who will pick two of you, who will pick two of you out of six to serve a four-year term on the Aspen School District Board of Education. Just a quick review of our format tonight, and then we'll get started. We will have a one-minute introduction for each candidate to let us know who they are. Then, we'll get into the questions from Curtis and I. At the end, we'll give each candidate a two-minute closing statement. In an effort to keep as many questions, to get in as many questions as possible, we may limit the number of responses to each question. We know sometimes a lot of people feel the same way, so we don't want to certainly get into that. But if somebody wants to have a thought on something and we haven't gotten to you, please let us know. But we do want to make sure we're getting in as many questions as we can. Your answers to the questions, if you could, we ask that you keep them to three minutes or less. We'll try to give you a 30-second heads-up on our handy-dandy timers here, and we'll just be able to get in as much as we can in the next hour or so. So, to start with our one-minute opening questions, Katie has the last name with F, so she gets to go first for your opening statement, and then that'll be followed by John.
Well, thankfully, I'm married into the F last name. I'm Katie Frisch. Thank you, first of all, David, Curtis, Aspen Daily News, Aspen Times, fellow candidates. We have lots of great choices up here, and it's been a very invigorating week, to say the least. I'm looking forward to the weekend to get a little rest from all these forums. And thank you for everyone who's out here tonight. It's great to see everyone so interested. Brief bio: My husband, Adam, and I have lived here for 16 years. We have two kids that have made their way through the district. They're born at AVH, a current ninth grader in the high school and a seventh grader in the middle school. I have worked on the financial advisory board at the district for the last 10 years, also spent 13 years on the Aspen Valley Ski and Snowboard Club Board, and Roaring Fork Youth Orchestra, Aspen Public Radio as well, and when my kids were little, the Wildwood School Board. I currently run my family cable television manufacturing business back east. And from an educational background, I have an MBA from University of Chicago and BS in electrical engineering from Brown University.
Great. Thank you, Katie. John?
Thank you for having us, press. I really appreciate that. My name is John Galambos. This is our third night in a row for these forums. The first was for the district, the second was for AEF, and tonight we get to speak to the community through the Aspen Times, Aspen Daily News, and Grassroots TV. So, I appreciate the opportunity to do this. I've been thinking a lot about community lately. This board and the forums have made us all think about that. Robin and I have been part of the Aspen community for 26 years. We have three wonderful kids that we've raised in the North Forty. They all attended kindergarten, they all graduated from Aspen High School, and they're all currently in college right now. At Aspen, each kid was allowed to grow into the individual and beautiful and unique people that they are. And for that, this small public school system has really done a great job with them, and that we are very grateful. It took a community to support them in their growth. The parents, the schools, and Aspen community are all necessary to raise great kids. I really appreciate the time that we're going to get tonight to discuss the issues. I just want to say that I will learn, and I will study, and I will ask questions, and most of all, I will listen. There are a lot of important decisions coming up, and we need input from all of us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Patty?
I'm Patty Kirkoulis. I have been living in the Aspen School District for 19 years. I'm married, and I have two kids, a seventh grader and an eighth grader, who's sitting right back there, Felix. Thank you for showing up. And first of all, you know, like we've all said, it's great to be sitting up here with all the candidates. I've really gotten to know everybody in the past couple of days, and I think it's been a great exercise having all of these forums in a row. And throughout the process, I've been grateful to listen and learn, and it really has affirmed to me that we live in a great community that deeply cares about our school and, most importantly, our children. And I think that in and of itself is a great blessing. The reason I'm running for school board is because I'm the mother of two, and not only do I have a passion for our district, but I also have the mental strength as well, which I can handle all of this, what's happening in our district. And since my kids have been in the district, I have felt some of the ups and downs of our district, and I'm familiar with the challenges, and I'm familiar with all of the great things that our school has to offer. And I'm really looking forward and excited about the opportunity to move forward with some new momentum and new direction in our district.
Great. Thank you, Patty. Jonathan?
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us here and thanks for coming. It's great to see more faces out there, and there's been quite a few every night. So, I appreciate that you guys taking the time. So, who I am? I grew up in Colorado, Netherlands, for those of you who know where that is, frozen dead guy and all that goes with it. So, I know kind of like the small mountain town culture, grew up ski racing, all that kind of fun stuff, and it was a great time. I later got married. I met my wife Paula at the university at the Colorado School of Mines. She's Colombian, so I get a good Latin mix in there, and so that has taken me around the world as well. So, I've lived in Bogota, Columbia, Boston, St. Louis, and then back to Colorado in Boulder, and then back to Columbia and here again. So, I've been around the world a little bit. So, I'm running because this is the way I give back. I've been involved with my kids' school ever since they've been in school. My experience, I have previous school board experience, five years, two years of experience on the district accountability committee, and 15 years on professional boards. I'm a CFO in my day job. So, I work out of the basement here and travel to Columbia once a month, working there. And I already told you, I have an engineering degree from the School of Mines and an MBA from the Harvard Business School. Did I make the minute?
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate it. Jim?
Well, thank you once again, like everyone else said. Thank you for the, all the media in town for putting this on. I feel like I've been in some ways a part of that ever since I sold my newspapers when I was a little boy, sold my Aspen Times out on the corners. That's how they used to do it. I have been a part of the schools pretty much my whole life. I went all the way through high school here in Aspen. I taught then, after coming back from college, I taught in the schools, and then my children both graduated, or one's about to graduate, and one did graduate from Aspen High School. My oldest is 20, and he's away at college, and he has learned great skills here, besides academics. He's learned how to be an independent person who can think for himself, who can deal with challenges. We were talking to him just today about some ups and downs. He's having a college, and he's able to handle those things. And I want to continue that whole-child education that I think the Aspen schools are noted for, and that's one of the main reasons I'm running. And I'm also looking forward to listening more and building that listening skills throughout the entire district, which I think have been severely lacking.
Great. Thank you, Jim. And Bettina?
A particular shout-out to those of you who are also on our third debate.
Mike, can you turn your mic on?
Sorry? Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and start over?
Okay. So, I'm Bettina Slusar, and I was just giving a shout-out to those of you who have been to all of these debates. That is real work, but it's a pleasure to be here with all of you tonight. Thank you for joining us. I am a fairly recent transplant, the most recent of this group, to Aspen. My family and I moved here four years ago from Chicago. I have a sophomore at the high school. I have an eighth grader at the middle school. And despite the fact that I just got here in Aspen terms, I'm not a local yet, not 20 years, I have jumped in full throttle with both feet at the school. I'm on the two sacks. I've served on the deck. I'm part of Theron, our principal's coterie of people who do things. I've just launched a system to bring the community into the school called Volunteer Match, and I'm happy to talk about that later if anybody wants to know. I think that the advantage that I have, because I'm new, is that I have fresh eyes, and I'm looking at the same stuff a little bit differently than people who have been here for a really long time. I'm running because I think there's a really interesting problem that we need to solve, which is why our well-funded school district is struggling to attract and retain great staff, why some of our children are struggling academically, and this is not limited to Aspen, but what we can do to support our children emotionally in a time of great instability. I don't think it's a secret that there's a lot of anxiety out there, and I think collectively, we can do a lot more to address that, social-emotional stuff. I currently am a managing director for a messaging company. I am a part-time ski instructor. I'm a parent, as we've already said, and I'm a volunteer. And that's the other reason I'm doing this, because I think that what makes a community happen is volunteers. And if we all do a little bit, we could get a lot done. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Let's start off with something a little fun.
Oh, boy.
Start down here on the end with Jim, and we'll just go in order. What was the dumbest thing you ever did in school, or what were you sent to the principal's office for and why?
High school or college?
Don't go to college.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Be clean, Jim.
Actually, I will tell a college story, and it worked out. It was probably one of the dumbest things I ever did, but it worked out. I was doing political philosophy class, and we had heard a rumor that our teacher had written a journal article on Plato. And what our assignment was, was to find a journal article and then critique it heavily, and then turn it in with, you know, good reasoning. So, of course, being young and naive, we just destroyed him in his article. We just ripped it apart. But we did, we worked harder on that article than we'd probably ever worked on any paper I ever did in college, and I got an A on it. And it was quite a lesson to me, is that hard work does pay off, and you can, even when you try things beyond what you're ready for, beyond something that you're maybe should, it can pay off if you work hard at it.
Great. Thank you. John?
I didn't do a lot of dumb things in high school, and that's probably the dumbest thing I did. I think I was toed the line a little too much. And so, I think that the only thing that sent me to the principal's office was in middle school throwing a hard peretzel at a kid, and that was about it. So, I'm afraid that's who I am.
All right. That's good. Katie?
I failed PE and almost didn't graduate from high school my senior year, and got in a lot of trouble for it. I was a ski racer, and I missed about 40 days of school my senior year, and kind of forgot to find out how many days I could miss before I did that. So, yeah, I was in the school of my choice, and I almost completely blew it. But luckily, I was able to do a little extra credit for the PE teacher, and I had to do extra credit PE to pass.
That's good. Thank you.
Well, there's so many of them. I would say in high school, if we're looking at high school, I actually went to a boarding school for high school, and me and about four of my friends decided to sign out to fake houses and hitch a ride down to Los Angeles to go to a Grateful Dead concert, and got ourselves back on time for Monday morning class. I think that was probably about the dumbest thing that I did.
Got away with it?
Yes. Well, got away with it, but definitely parents knew about it by like the next weekend. So...
Good.
I don't want to tell any high school stories because I don't want to perjure myself or get in trouble. I remember very clearly in fifth grade, writing a book, it's true, writing a book report or a report about suffragettes, and there was a boy in my class, Fritz von Behren, I will never forget this, who basically threw down and said, "Girls can't do what boys can do." And I punched him in the face and drew blood. So, I think that was the start of my activism, actually. That's all.
Okay, let's see. That's how you can't tell. Okay. Yeah, I guess when I was a senior, we got our hands on the keys to the school. So, we would, you know, I guess in hindsight, it just seemed like fun, or at the time, it was fun, but then afterwards, it was like breaking and entering and all those kinds of things. But we never got caught, and we managed to actually move around, you know, the furniture from the entire school to different classrooms, and so we had a lot of fun with that. And we got our hands on all the locks, all the lockers, and, you know, took them off and put them in a giant pile. But then they turned us in actually after the end of the year, and so we did not get completely unscathed, but at least I didn't put my, if I would have gotten caught beforehand, I don't know if they would have let me graduate. But I made it through.
Well, luckily, the statute of limitations is over on B and E, so you should be fine. Well, good. That was just, we just want to kind of break the ice a little bit there. So, we've got a couple of categories that we'll go through tonight, and like I said earlier, we'll limit our questions to three minutes. We'll do as many people as want to, to address the conversation, the question at that time, and we'll keep moving through. So, first, we'd like to talk about teachers and get some thoughts on that from everyone. Our first question, do you agree with the Aspen Teachers Association that starting salaries need to be a minimum of $50,000 up from the current $43,000? And if so, where would that money come from? Jim, I know we started with you last time, but let's just start on the left, and we'll go to the right and see. So, the question, starting salaries at $50,000, and if so, where does that $7,000 difference come from?
Well, I would start by saying that I agree that we need to do some, that the district needs to do much better research on affirming what exactly we do need to be paying our teachers. I don't think we can just say, "We're going to pay them this," without the research to back it up to say that that's what other districts are paying first-year teachers. If we find that we are lacking pay of other first-year teachers, and we're having a hard time recruiting teachers, then definitely we need to look at how to increase that pay to something that will be equitable and attractive to new teachers. That is going to be a very big question of where that money will come from. Our budget is very tight and very challenging. I think that there are some places where we can find some room, especially within the sort of the transportation and operational budget for the facilities, as well as possibly, cross your fingers, maybe working with some other organizations that have similar problems throughout our valley in the benefits, you know, if we can maybe team up with some of the other departments and come up with almost like a collective bargaining on some of our benefits, maybe we can put some of those fees down, because those are actually growing at a faster rate than the salaries are.
Thank you. John, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah. I compared our salaries to other districts, but the real answer is yes. They're professionals. I think about what I pay my Bachelor of Architecture professionals, and it's more than 50 grand. And I really wish, we need to start there, and we need to pay our teachers that kind of salary. They are professionals. They're degreed. They've gone to school. It's a sliding scale, and that's what makes this tricky, because if you got a master's, you make more than that. This whole chart that all the teachers are working off of, if you start at 50 for a BA, well, then the people who have got a master's should start higher. And this is tricky. The budget is a tricky animal. It's 35 million, give or take, of total, are we okay?
Yeah, you're good.
35 million bucks. I think we can find a way to do this. I do, I'm going to talk about it a lot, but we've talked about it before. Public-private partnerships are a great way to start.
And how is that with P3s?
Well, my dad was a chaired professor. I am not scared of the school district soliciting money from individuals for naming rights or for chaired departments or anything like that. I'd love to flesh that out, but I'm not scared of seeing that. We've got some people here who wouldn't mind stroking a check. Let's get it to the teachers.
Good. Thank you. Katie?
Absolutely. The teachers are the ones who are doing the hard work every day. They're the most important assets. They're the ones who make the education possible for our kids. And they live in a place that has an extremely high cost of living. So, while it's important to look at what other places people are paid, it's also important to recognize that very few places have a cost of living that is close to ours. So, we've been very, we have an extremely generous community, and we're very lucky to have the support of organizations like AEF and all the tax bases that help provide our ability to do everything that we do do at this point. Having said that, I think that the financial, the finances can be better managed. I think there are likely many areas where policies and procedures are not helping spend our dollars most effectively. So, if we can straighten things up a little bit, I think we can find some more money. But most importantly, I think we need to be creative in where we can find other sources of revenue as well. It's all going to come down to making priorities for the district and figuring out what's most important. And I'm absolutely supportive of trying to find some more money for the teachers.
Good. Thank you. Patty?
Absolutely. I think that, per just what Katie said, that our teachers are so important. They are the ones that are with our children eight hours every day. And I do think that we need a competitive salary base in order to attract the best teachers that we can to our community. And I think our teachers work so hard. I mean, I don't know another community where teachers actually take a week off from their own lives to go on an outdoor ed trip with children. And I think that just goes to show how much extra work that our teachers do do. Where the money is going to come from, I would agree. I think that we need to start aligning our, we have to decide what our priorities are, and then align the budget with that. And if our priorities are, which is my priority, is to pay the teachers more, then we need to figure out with the budget, you know, where we're going to get the money. I think there are some areas that we could, I think that a lot of the, there's been a lot of district positions recently that have been, the district office is stacked with every position possible, as well as assistants, and I think there's some room for movement there. And I think that we need to find other areas as well.
Talk about, do you think, just a quick follow-up, ex-ed and outdoor ed, should the teachers be compensated separately from their annual salary for that? Is that what you think?
No. Actually, in a perfect world, what I think is that our teacher, that we should have a director of outdoor education, so that it takes some of the pressure off of our teachers. And then I think that we could even hire some outside help with maybe some of nonprofits in the valley. I know that there's an Outward Bound Base Camp here. I think all of those things are resources that we should use to help our teachers with outdoor ed, as well as make the program as best as it can be. I mean, we live in an amazing community with mountains around us, so we should have the best outdoor ed. You know, if we're going to do it, let's do it right. So, that's what I think.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Bettina?
Yeah, I would argue that 50,000 may not be enough. There's a great article that somebody sent to me that, about what Utah has done recently. They did a study that showed that in order to get and keep top staff, they need to start at $60,000. They didn't figure out how to fund it yet, but they have come to that conclusion based on the fact that there are fewer and fewer people going into education, and so there are fewer people to fill the slots that are opening up. And we need to make education what it once was a very well-respected and well-compensated and critical position in the community. I don't actually think, I would disagree with Jim, that we need to do research. I'm pretty sure the AEA has already done that. They know what people are getting paid around the state, and we do, we actually know that as well. Cherry Creek is actually less than us, but it's cheaper to live there. So, when you adjust for cost of living, we're actually asking our teachers to live in poverty, which is not acceptable.
Denver Public Schools, Westminster, I believe those are starting at 50,000?
Correct. Yeah. For some reason, Cherry Creek is low. I don't know why. But I would also agree with Patty. I think that our, I don't, the budget has been somewhat of a black box with spaghetti in the middle, and nobody seems to know what's going where. And until we get a clear view of that picture, it's hard to say where the money is going to come from. But it has to be our top priority, because everything rolls from there. And so if we need to shrink the administration, which is the same size as the administration for the Cherry Creek District, we have far fewer children and buildings. So, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I disagree on the outdoor ed. I think that asking teachers to take five to seven days off of their personal life, go out into the woods, and work far more than eight hours a day without additional compensation, doesn't make a lot of sense. I think that we're asking teachers to put their personal lives to one side, and we're not helping them with that. We're not saying, "Oh, do you have a dog that needs to be taken care of? Let me help you with that." They just have to figure it out. I also think that our outdoor ed, which is a great program, should be more closely tied into our overall curriculum.
Great. Thank you. Jonathan?
Yeah. So, just to add, I would add that, you know, basically, the Cost of Living Index compared to the state average here is like 1.7 times. It's the highest one in the state by far. So, that's even more reason to get that up. The top, on the average teacher salary, we're about $16,000 away from the most expensive, or the highest-paying, average salary school, which is Cherry Creek. And then basically, where does the money come from? I mean, we spend 91% more than the average Colorado school per student. So, you know, where you need to first start going is being as most efficient as you can in the things that are not adding value to our students. So, you know, we need to have the most efficient bus system. We need to have the most efficient maintenance system. We need to have the most efficient way to clean our schools. And then all those things that aren't adding value of our children can do that. And if you just look at the numbers and try and compare to a benchmark of other mountain schools, there's like 1.6 million dollars right there, if we can just get to the same operational efficiencies of others, of the average of other schools. Now, you know, why we're not there, all those kinds of things obviously need to be looked into. Maybe there's a good reason why it costs more for whatever in general in Aspen and certain things. But, you know, the way to go about it is, here's the budget, here's the number I need to get to. If you want to get to this $16,000 per more teacher, you need about over $3 million. So, you've got to change that mix of stuff. I mean, there's, people have already mentioned the other district administration, just getting to that. If we can get some averages on that in district and school administration, we can get another, you know, $6,000 to $800,000. And so, you just start going down the list, and you say, "Where do I need to have my resources, and how do I allocate them?" And I actually think the problem is bigger than just the teachers. I think we need to do, you know, Bettina mentioned it, we need to do a lot more for the social-emotional learning curriculum. Tom Heald has gotten some grants. Catherine Sands is doing a great job. But, you know, we need to continue to be able to move money from things that, you know, are nice to have but not necessary, and not having the highest impact on what's good for our children, to things that have that. And we all know teachers is the number-one impact, so that needs to be the number-one priority. That's it.
This follows that question.
This follows that question. This is about housing. We'll start with Bettina. The district has fifty housing units currently, we believe, for teachers. What more could the district be doing to secure housing for its teachers that will keep them in the community?
Well, I mean, for a start, our teachers are not in the lottery in Snowmass. Why not? I don't know. That makes no sense. I think that we need to camp out at council until they change that. Teachers should be viewed as critical workers in the same way that hospital employees are and fire departments and police departments. So if we could get our teachers to the top of the list of the lottery, we would immediately expand the pool. Housing is a, obviously a huge issue in this town. I don't purport to know how to solve that from sitting right here. But what I can say is that I'm in agreement with John on the public-private partnership concept. That what has happened a lot is everybody's trying to solve things in their own little, on their own lily pad. And if we can look at the whole pond, we might be able to come up with some better solutions than what we've done so far.
Great. Take it to Jonathan and then back to the other end of the table.
Yeah, sure. So I think we have fifty housing units. Only twenty, teachers are only in twenty-four of them, classroom teachers. So the problem's even worse than, you know, we have fifty and fifty are for teachers, and though we have fifty and a lot of them go to administration and other key personnel, and then we have twenty-four left over for teachers. So that's, that's an issue. There's two-hundred-and-twenty staff. So if we're gonna make a real impact on this, I think, you know, we're gonna have to do something big like a bond issue or something and get some real money behind it. Because you can't get, you know, if we only wanna get half of the people in housing and have that availability for them, then you're talking a hundred-and-ten units, right? So that's sixty more at the average cost of a house in Aspen. We're looking at some big math. So, and I think, you know, we're gonna have to try and say, what's our target? You know, there is a strategic planning process going on. Out of that needs to come, we need to be able to house fifty percent of our staff to be effective and to be competitive. Or we need to house forty, or we need to house a hundred. I don't know what the number is, but that's the kind of thing we need to do. And then you need to backtrack and say, okay, well, how are we gonna do it? What are our options? Do we need a bond issue? You know, and I don't know the public-private partnership is such a, an option in terms of doing things like that, given the scale of it. But we gotta figure out ways and it's gonna take everybody, you know, breaking their heads and trying to do what's best for the community and to the teachers. And that's it. And it's gonna, but it's gonna take some bold stuff. It's not gonna be solved one unit at a time for the next five years. That won't get us there.
Can I add one thing?
Go ahead.
I think with both of these topics, with teacher salaries and with housing, the bottom line is we're gonna have to make some hard choices. This is, there's no easy fix out there. If there were, we'd already done it. Sort of like, if there were a shortcut, that would be the trail. It, we are gonna have to get down to brass tacks and make hard choices. And actually, in the strategic plan, there's a great quote that Tom Heald put in. "If you're not willing to accept the pain real values incur, don't bother going to the trouble of formulating a values statement." And I think that we, as a community and a board, need to recognize that teachers are our most important asset and putting them in a house that they can, where they can be part of the community needs to be part and parcel of that value.
Take it back down to Jim with that same question. What could the district be doing to secure housing for teachers and staff? And what should that goal be? You know what?
Well, I think we, our goal should be that, the school district's goal should be to put whatever teachers wanna be in some sort of housing that they can afford. They should have that option. That, that should be our goal. Now, not all teachers are going to wanna do that. Some teachers are going to wanna live down valley, they're gonna wanna live in carbon, they're gonna wanna climb wood. But they should have the option of being able to live in housing that they can afford. I think unfortunately, not too many people have any ideas on how to do this. I actually have probably more experience with employee housing and how the program works in this valley than I know within this group. And I'm probably one of the most knowledgeable folks outside of APSHA itself. I have been doing, working with the, with employee housing for the last decade, just in my job, day-to-day, working for the city. There are partnerships that can be done. There is possibilities of combining. We are not gonna build ourselves, all by ourselves. There's no way the district is gonna build enough housing. It just aren't. It's just too expensive. John can run through the numbers he knows. It's just too expensive for us to do it on our own. But it is possible, working with the county, the city, with APSHA. There is partnerships that can be formed, that can get housing for our teachers. Might even be able to do it relatively low cost. There's the whole credits program. There are rental units being built right now. The city is looking at themselves of how, what all they're gonna build. We can be talking to them right now and saying, hey, if you're gonna be building this, what can we do to be partner? And we can leverage our money together and build even more. There's a lot out there that can be done, but you have to, you have to have somebody who knows how it actually works. And by the way, if it's employee housing through APSHA, it can't be, there is no district employees that will probably qualify to be in those units. It's only teachers that will actually be qualified to be living in those units.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
There, there's a lot of questions not being asked. I think if you asked the administration today, or even maybe members of the board, how many units we need? I don't think anyone's ever asked that question. There's, that data's not out there. How many teachers want to live in housing? What type of housing? Is it a duplex? Is it a single-family home? Is it an apartment building? No one's asked those questions. We need to start there and identify what our real need is. I think the facilities people who are working on the strategic plan, I think they need to be asking those questions. I think the, the issue with public-private, I agree with Jim. We need to, we need to start hounding people. We're in the Picken County Commissioners Room. I drive by the bus barn every day and I just go, if we can convince Picken County to move that someplace, find some land, like maybe down by the airport on the lower end, that parcel, put our buses down there, we have a parcel of land that we can use for housing. So we gotta be creative and we gotta partner up with a lot of these entities. City, county, private developers, and we gotta work on that. There's forty million dollars sitting in the RET, the Real Estate Transfer Tax at the Wheeler. Are we at the table for that? Have we even asked? I would love, I'd love to know if we're going and saying, we need to be on the table.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Katie, you can address that.
And my husband led that charge, I'm trying to get the council to do that. So I have actually spent, by default, talking to my husband about this quite a bit. This is one of his biggest things that he's worked on in the last ten years. So housing is a community-wide problem. It is not an Aspen School District problem. It is a community-wide problem that the six of us are not going to solve. We need the city, the county, the hospital, SCICO. Everybody needs to be involved in this conversation. And it's not just a conversation of how we do it, but what do we wanna do? If we wanna build more housing, we have issues that, we have decisions we need to make. How do we feel about open space? How do we feel about building height? All these kinds of things. So this is a community-wide value decision about how many people we wanna, we wanna house in the city and the county. We're not gonna do this alone. Clearly, we have the need to have teachers housed. We lose younger teachers, typically newer teachers, because they sort of come here and then realize that they don't quite know what they're gonna do and how they're gonna live. There are twenty-eight-hundred units in APSHA that they qualify after four years. They can, they can start applying for those. Those forty-seven units, if you go on and look at what they're intended to be, they're intended to be transition housing. Or fifty units now, I guess. They're intended to be transition housing, not lifetime housing. It's supposed to be, what it says on the form is that this is supposed to get you until you can get into other situations. So we need to think about that as a board. And that probably should come as part of a facilities plan, as part of the strategic plan. Not just, not, not as a standalone thing. Say it costs about five-hundred thousand dollars per unit to build one unit, one unit. That's a lot of teacher pay, too. So there's decisions to be made about where we want to spend the money. And that's part of the strategic planning process. It will be part of the new leadership of the new board and the new superintendent. So I guess I'm not willing to say what we should do. I think this needs to be a collective exercise to figure out what's the best thing for the community.
Thank you. Patsy, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, I would agree that it's a, housing is an issue across the board in Aspen and Snowmass. I, right now, I'm hiring, you know, twenty people to work for me at Buttermilk. And housing is a huge issue because they don't make enough money. But I, you know, I think that we first of all need to ask the teachers, what do you want? Okay, do you want us to, do you want us to build you housing? Or maybe we don't build the housing, like you were saying. It costs five-hundred thousand dollars to build one unit. Maybe we pay them more and they can choose where they wanna live. So I think it is, there are, and I'm not saying that's exactly what we need to do, but we need to find out what teachers want. Do they, you know, do they wanna live up here? And if they do, we also need to come up with a system that's fair and balanced. I don't think that a lot of teachers even know why one teacher has housing and another teacher doesn't. So we need to be more transparent about the whole system in general with the public and with the teachers. And then we need to understand what the teachers want. And again, it is, it's not just, you know, the school system. It's everywhere. So I agree with Katie. Like, we have to bring in many entities and discuss how to tackle this problem. And I also think we really need to encourage our teachers to use the in-place lottery system and that they should be a part of the Snowmass Lottery. I think that, that's one way to, you know, a small step in getting to where we need to be.
Good, thank you, Patsy. We're gonna move on and talk about climate and culture because that was a big thing with the previous administration and where we are going forward. The first question in this category, climate and culture has come under a microscope, as all of you know. And I think we can probably keep these tight, but please feel free. Where do you think the breakdown in terms of climate and culture was under the last superintendent? And how do you, how do you move forward and get that trust back from here? And Patsy, why don't we start with you on that one?
I think that the breakdown was with the superintendent and a board that backed the superintendent and did not listen to what was happening in the district. And specifically with teachers. The fact that teachers came to parents with their stories, you know, they, you know, there was a need to get involved and to help out the climate and culture situation. I think that we, I think that there was a lot, there was a lot of issues. I'm looking at comments from people that emailed me about, you know, what was happening to them at school. I think we need to move forward. We need to find a superintendent and as a board, we need to sort of identify what our goals are for a superintendent. And then as a board, move forward to hire someone. We need to be transparent. We need to, that is gonna be a really hard thing for the superintendent, but he needs to gain the trust of all the teachers and the community. And I think we start by communication, by transparency. I mean, housing is a great issue. Like, they're not transparent about why people get housing. Let's, you know, that all comes into our climate and culture issues. So transparency, integrity, and just bringing forth more of a culture that everyone knows about instead of is questioning about and creating rumors.
John, do you wanna hit on that?
I would agree that communication is the solution to this issue. There's a lot of breakdown and healing that needs to occur in this community based on what happened the last few years. I think if you were to analyze what the breakdown was, I really feel that we have a board governance model that tends to put up a veil between the board and the public. And I really think we need to work on being creative in ways to get people to talk together and get people to foster, foster mutual civility and respect with each other. I think people were banging their heads. I understand their frustration. I don't agree with how things went down, the methodology. Like, the end result was good for the community. I think we need to rebuild that trust and hiring the right superintendent's gonna be a big part. And also, as a board, defining how we're gonna communicate. I was thinking about open houses or community nights where the board is available to people. Too often, I think there's this, we got these meetings and we got this structure and, sorry, and we don't communicate because it's, if you, if you can only get your point across at a board meeting, that's, that's trouble. We need to say, open up our, open up our houses and our books and say, let's talk. If you got a problem, let's talk about it.
You mentioned you didn't like the way it went down. What do you mean by that?
I think that there was a very divisive tone in the room. I think there was a lot of people that brought anger to the, anger to the table. I think it's born out of frustration. I've learned a lot listening to everybody here. I wasn't really a part of all that. I supported Malloy when I wrote an email saying, hey, board, this is your, this is your issue. You don't need a, you don't need a survey to find out what the problem is and you don't need a survey to take action. You should, the board needs to govern. And if they see a problem and it's a reoccurring problem, that's the board's job. That's what our job is. You're electing us to manage their only employee, which is the superintendent. And unfortunately, they, the people who, you know, are, who got riled up weren't being listened to. And how they got riled up caused some damage on the other end. So we need, we need to talk together. We need to get together. We need to open up our homes and talk.
Thank you. Jonathan, do you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, sure. So I think it was, and, you know, what the information showed from the survey is there was a breakdown in leadership. And when you talk to the, the teachers and the staff members, you know, there was a kind of a, and we even saw it at some of the board meetings, kind of a throw your, throw the people under the bus style that generated a lot of mistrusts. And so why is that bad for education? And, you know, any of the research you look at, there really needs to be a lot of trust so that, you know, the teachers and the staff can all work together to do what's best for our kids because they have to be communicating and they have to say, look, there's a problem here with this child. How do we get him the most resources? And you have to be able to reach out into the community and get, and pull on all the resources to make sure we do the most for all of our kids. So that's kind of, you know, why that was so damaging and kind of why it all broke down. I think an important thing to note for, you know, especially John has said, you know, it was, a lot of people said they were surprised by what happened. This had been out there, you know, I worked on the DAC and I put in the recommendations. It had been in there for three years, it'd been completely ignored by the board. Prior to that, there were things that were completely ignored as well, like the, you know, no vote of confidence for one of the principals and just kind of all this stuff just kind of kept building up. And, you know, there was no action taken. So finally, there was a movement to get action taken. I think they actually did the right thing. They went out and hired somebody professional to come in and say, this is the way it is, from a kind of standoff thing. And that confirmed a result that, you know, brought about change. So I don't, I don't know that that process was necessarily a bad one from that perspective. I think the board, you know, they were not in agreement on what needed to be done, so they looked to somebody outside to help them make a tough decision. So I think that's a good thing. And they made it based on that. I'm a data guy and so that's why I like to make my decisions based on that because I think it brings a certain amount of impartiality. But more importantly, where do we go from here? So there does need to be rebuilding and healing and everything. But I don't know that it's so much with us, really needs to happen in the schools. And so, you know, the new leaders and not even, we can, we don't even have to wait for the new guy. I mean, the principals now are doing, or the new guy or girl, just to make sure Bettina kicked me.
It's not like it's a third.
You said that. So what I will say is that it's a thing, you know, to rebuild culture and climate, you gotta do it, you gotta go and you gotta be there and be present and listen to people's things and then work on them. Because just going and listening. Because just going and listening doesn't do it. Lots of people, the board always told us, we're listening to your recommendations, Dak. Thank you so much. We're very happy that you turned them in, but they didn't do anything about it. So that is the key. Knowing what to do afterwards and implementing those plans and going out and talking to the teachers, what are your concerns? What do you can do? What can I do to help you to get that done? That's what needs to be done.
Thank you. Bettina, you were a part of that, Dak.
I was, and I was part of APAC, which was the Aspen Parent Action Committee that ultimately got Malloy removed. And I'm, I'm, I'm with Jonathan. I mean, I think if you were, if you were paying attention, this should not have been a surprise. Malloy was actually put on probation within a year of first taking up his post as superintendent. And there were repeated attempts over the years of his, of his reign where the board tried to make him a better leader by teaching him how to be more personable and how to listen and how to be compassionate. I come from a school of thought that, that you either know how to do that or you don't. You don't read a book and figure it out. And it certainly didn't work in his case. I, I think that, you know, one of the things that came to light yesterday is that in order to get the data that supported what we ended up doing in terms of Malloy, Jonathan had to file two Freedom of Information Act requests because the administration wouldn't give us the data. And this is a public school that our taxes are paying for. So while I, I am sympathetic and empathetic to the fact that there were real human beings involved in this situation, whose feelings were hurt, whose families were in the newspaper and, and, you know, when you're a public figure, that's actually part of the deal. That's what you sign up for. And I think that if the administration and the board had been willing to sit down and have conversations, had been willing to listen to the teachers, had been willing to give us the data, none of it would have had to go the way it did.
Jimmy.
And one more thing, sorry. I think that what we're doing right now in the middle school and the high school with restorative justice is, is what kind of has to flow out to the staff. So we're doing it with the kids, but it's a great way to get people away from us and them and back into we.
Thank you. Jim and Katie, you haven't had a chance yet. Katie?
Sure. Yeah, so you know, clearly there is a transparency and communication issue, and I think these guys have really covered that well and continue to. What I'm more interested in is what we can do next and how we can create, as the new board can create, a community appropriate process to find the best fit, community appropriate leader. And I, I think we all need to start moving on from what happened to finding a leadership that is going to be strong and is going to be appropriate for our unique mountain town with all the great programs that we have in the school and all the places that we want to go as a community and who we'll be able to communicate with, not to, the community as well. So nothing long, just that.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, no, I, I want to reiterate much of what you said, communication. I think we all see the importance of everything that didn't go right. And we are in, now in a correction period, moving towards good direction. And the hiring of a new superintendent is a perfect example of where to start with this. We have a new CFO, a new, a new HR director, and now we're going to have a new superintendent. And I think we can really start moving in some good directions. And this needs to be part of the very hiring of that superintendent. It can't just be, well, here's, here's someone we've hired and here's your job and here's what you're going to go do. The very hiring of the superintendent needs to be vetted throughout the entire community. It needs to have all the staff and teachers involved in that hiring process. The community needs to have opportunities to weigh in on, on which, who's the best candidate. This cannot just be five people. That's the problem. In the past, everything's just been five people who make all the decisions and they don't tell anybody how else it all works or they don't even talk to anybody about how it should work. And that can't go on that way. It's got to be a much broader question and broader communication with the whole community.
Great, thank you.
So, so we are eating through time much faster than we can get through our questions. So if there's any.
We're over here moderating our questions.
We'll try and talk less.
That's all right. You know, maybe this is something we could, we can accomplish with, with just a few words, a few sentences from each of you.
Good luck with that one.
Obviously, this is a unique community. This is a unique district. It's going to take a unique individual to be the next superintendent without using words like communication, transparency, trustworthiness, or accountability.
I don't know any other words.
What characteristics are we looking for in our next superintendent? Start with you, John.
Well.
If you'd like.
I have my bullet points.
No communication, no transparency, trustworthy, or accountability.
Need to be a great communicator. I'll, I'll focus on something. The superintendent needs to, man, he needs to be likable. It's something that, you know, if you, if you remember Tom Farrell way back, he was a likable guy. And he was good with the community and he had kids in the community. He was, you could approach him. You need, we need an approachable, likable person. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Katie?
Oh, I, I would sum it up in one word, and I'll just say one, is leadership. Community appropriate leadership.
Thank you. Patsy?
I would say, I would say leadership. I also think we need a super who is going to listen and work with the teachers and not create a division between a, the district administration and the teachers and faculty. And I think that when you talk about Tom, I think he was, he worked really well with the teachers. I think they felt that he really did. And then they got completely the opposite. So I think that's a very important role for the super as well.
Thank you.
Visionary. Somebody who can take this amazing place and make it all that it can be.
Yeah, I'll.
Him or her.
I'll add that she, he. She, he should, should be visionary as well. Definitely fit and a builder of organizations. So, you know, this person needs to come in and be able to develop his team and develop all the staff and get all the teachers on board to be able to accomplish that vision. I mean, it really needs to be somebody who can do that.
I'm going to break all the rules and all of your rules and say that we need a leader who will communicate, communicate with the community with great transparency.
There we go.
Thanks for being the rebel, Jim. We appreciate that. Let's talk about inside the classroom. We'll go there and then we'll get into our closing statements to keep on time. Recent test results show that just 41% of third graders meet or exceed reading standards. Why do you think that's the case and what should we do about it? And what are the areas of studies in school curriculum most lacking? And let's, let's go right to left on this one if we could. Jonathan, why don't you go first?
Okay, so what happened was in, back in 2010, they changed all the school standards. Basically, we all kind of went to common core. And that got implemented in 2014. That's when everything kind of fell off the cliff when we, when we changed, come from one test to another. And they basically raised the bar for everybody in the whole overall district, or in the whole state, I'm sorry. And so in that point of time, Aspen kind of is a percentile rank kind of thing, how we were doing against everybody else, we declined more than everybody else. So that problem has been especially acute at the elementary school, much less at the high and the middle school actually has come back up for, they did well last year on, on that level. They had, they had dived down and they came back up, so.
Except for special ed.
Huh?
Except for special ed.
Okay. Just in general overall though, that it was nice to see a recovery after several years of being stagnated down there. So the, the biggest problem is in terms of standardized testing, because let's remember that's what this is, is still at the elementary school. It has gotten better. It was, you know, we were even lower and we're coming back. And so what, my personal opinion on what the problem is, is, is has been, it has a lot to do with curriculum alignment in terms of, you know, making sure that what we're teaching is aligned with what the common core standards are, because that's what the test is testing on. And I think we've been hearing a lot of how that, how that's been a priority for the board for a long time. We're still not there yet. And so that's where we're at. I think in terms of just my own personal experience, I will say, but, you know, usually when the kids do get to high school and, and get done there, they, they have caught up at least for the most part, as opposed to where we are in that standardized testing now. We're seeing, you know, there's a lot of improvement at the middle school. So I think it's more of a system issue in terms of how do we get around, making sure the curriculum's right, making sure we're getting all the support for the teachers and doing that. Because it's not something that our kids all of a sudden got less smart. You know, they're the same kids. You know, we, a lot of times it was just the same curriculum that's being taught and it's just not matched to the different standard that's there. So I think that's kind of the main issue and getting teacher support and everything. I mean, they're working their hard to do this. It's not, I don't think that it's like, oh, their teachers are doing a, a bad job teaching our kids. It's just, it's more, we need to get aligned with around what the standards are.
Thank you.
You know, honestly, I don't know why it's 41%. I heard that number at a Board of Ed meeting a couple of weeks ago and I found it pretty shocking. And at the same time, the community schools benchmarking at 78%. So they've, the problem with what Jonathan just said is that that same situation applies to everybody. The standards were changed across the board. So something's not happening. And now that we have that information, I think we need to figure out what that is. There has been historically a lack of curricular alignment across our buildings. So the three buildings were not talking to each other. And we've started that process with the curriculum director to align math and reading, which I think is going to help a ton. But in my opinion, given that statistic, we need to do some SWAT in the classroom right now, because those kids are in the classroom right now, and not have this be a long process and discussion, but just get on the ground and figure it out.
Thank you. Patsy?
I think one of the other questions that we need to be asking is what are our children learning? And I'm not sure that standardized testing always shows that. It doesn't take into circumstances like extra, you know, external factors, like what happened to the child before they even came to school. So I think we really need to take a look at our curriculum and start aligning it. A K through 12 curriculum will be, will, would be super helpful. I mean, I'm not even sure right now that the middle school has a curriculum that goes, you know, five through eight. So those are just little steps. And then we need to have good practice for our teachers. I think that's something that we should have aligned in our budget to help bring everybody up to a level that they need to be to get our kids to, to learn. And the, you know, the standardized testing don't actually always show what are our kids learning. I did talk to a fourth grade teacher last night after this fact came out, and she said that the, the test, the last test that the kids took, they actually did not take it on the computer, but it was intended for the computer and that the kids had never actually had to fill in an oval in order to, you know, take a test. And so that, that in and of itself showed, you know, that was a big problem with the test results. So I think there's a lot of factors that we need to look at, but I think a K through 12 curriculum would be one of the ways to get our school on track.
Katie, go ahead.
So when I saw this, at the same board meeting Bettina was referring to, 41%, I had to call up a couple of board members afterwards to make sure I, you know, wasn't going blind or hadn't, had misread the statistics. It was actually on two separate tests, one of which is computerized, one of which was not. And my reaction is this is a state of emergency type of thing. 41% for a school district like ours that has such a small free and reduced lunch population. It, it is not an inner city school. We do not have a tremendously large ESL population. This is horrific. This is something we need to fix right now because 41% of kids can't read. What are they going to do in high school? How are they going to get through the school district? And they're, they will bring everybody down with them if they're not at the, at the appropriate grade level. This is a really, really critical problem that I think should be an all hands on deck solution now. So why? I don't know. I, I suspect there are curriculum alignment issues. It's no one teacher. It's no one kid. It's no one bad day. It's 60, almost 60% of the kids can't read at the right level. It's just completely unacceptable.
John, go ahead.
Well, I'm pretty much echoing a lot of what these other people say. You know, curriculum alignment is very important. I do take a 12-year look at achievement. Our kids are, you know, my son had one really bad year. He turned out to be a great kid and do really well overall. So we, we need to not say, you know, one bad test is terrible or two bad tests. We do need to dive into why. I'm going to change the subject a little bit and say, we need the community to help in. We have this program called Room to Read. Let's, if we can solve this problem, we can tap some of the resources in community. We can solve the problem. We could get some people to help special. It's not just on the teachers. Let's get the community in here to help these kids learn how to read a little better. But otherwise, I kind of agree with everybody else.
Jim, would you like to add anything?
I'm going to be probably doing a lot of the same. I just briefly just say that, yes, I don't, I don't know that we do know why. I know we are researching that extensively right now. I know that there is, our Director of Curriculum is looking at this quite a bit. I know that we're doing our strategic plan right now and getting curriculum as a part of the strategic plan is important. And we need to have all of our, we need to know, say, this is where we're going to be at the end and how are we going to get there? And we haven't been doing that in the past. We have to be doing that in the future.
What is the board's role in that, right? How do you, what, as a board member, how do you, and I'm giving you this question just because it was a topic with everyone else, but how do you, as a board member, kind of put your time on that and focus on that when you have so many other things?
Well, so I, I don't believe that the board's job is to get into the day-to-day minutia of things. What we need to do is lay out clear goals. And this would be an obvious goal, to raise those test scores. But then, once it's been given to the superintendent, to the staff, what hasn't happened in the past is that they have simply said, we did this. They haven't shown statistics. They haven't shown numbers. I'm, I'm with Jonathan. I like data. I want someone to show me a graph that says, this is how we've done it and here's the evidence that it's happened. And that hasn't happened in the past. That's the board's job. Set the goal and then staff shows them how they've met that goal.
There's a, one of the things that the board does do when they look at testing is they vote on, is this reasonable progress or not? And I think that in and of itself is a problem. What is reasonable progress? They've never actually defined it. And then they keep passing, yes, this is reasonable progress. But clearly, it's not reasonable progress if this is where we are. So I think that's a really, that's a board issue that we need to take a look at and define.
This most recent meeting that Katie and I were at is a great example. This slide goes up and it's 41%. And then, then the next thing is, and, and in five years or in eight years, I don't remember what the number was, maybe you do.
It was in 12 years.
In 12 years, we'll be up to 73%. And then we moved on. And there was no discussion of how that was going to happen. So, you know, I think the role of the board is to say, hang on, you can't just magically jump from 41 to 73 without giving us iterations of how that's actually going to happen. And if you don't know how, then we need to stop everything right now and figure it out.
Yeah. I would just add that, you know, going to here be defending the, the standardized test results, mention that. Look, it's, it's above the 50, you know, it's like, I think it's the 53rd percentile. So we're about state average. So I know that when you say that it's 40th, you know, 40% are not meeting the target, that's what I was talking about when they reset the bar. So in the other things in Aspen is usually up in the 80th to 90th percentile usually. So that's where we're going. I mean, I want to be at 100th percentile. I mean, that's my vision for this. So I think it's, there's a problem in terms of definitely we need to work on it, but you know, it's not like saying, you know, 40, 60% of our kids are, are with this incredible problem. I mean, it's the standard, it's the standard there, but as a percent, as a state, you know, that's where we're performing.
The state, we're 40th, we're 40th in education already as a state.
And it's just saying there's a certain percentage that is acceptable to everyone in the state that can't read.
That's not spending.
Well, depending on what state you look. I mean, I've looked at ones that have made us look even worse than 40.
I'm just telling, I just want people to know where we're at. I, I am not in defense of 53%. This is a very, basically the socioeconomic makeup of our community should be that we're... at 90% doing that. And so, I'm not saying this is not a problem. I just want people to know where we're at in the 50th percentile in the elementary school. And where should we be? 100th.
Thank you. That was good. Appreciate it.
Well, we have come to the end here and it is time for closing statements. We're literally gonna be locked out of these doors at 7 o'clock, so. So, it is now time for closing statements. You have about two minutes. And you can offer a closing statement or address anything you'd like the public to know about, about your candidacy as we get ready to vote. See, who should start?
I think Bettina went last on the intro, right?
Yeah, let's do the reverse. That, that was our-
That was our goal, actually. Bettina, go ahead.
Yep.
No problem. So, in closing, I would say, first of all, I, I think that this is a great group of people. And I don't think that the voters are gonna go wrong with their choices. I think we are at the, the brink of a new era in education in Aspen, and I find that very exciting. And if I don't get elected, I will still be on all the committees that I'm currently on, pushing from the bottom instead of overseeing from the top. The reason that I think that getting me onto the board is a good idea is because I come to this with fresh eyes. I come to this with a lot of experience in turnarounds. And I think this is a turnaround situation, given what we were just discussing. I, last night, shared the anecdote that in my corporate career, I was offered the opportunity to go fix a company in Sweden. And the, the situation was compared to parachuting into Vietnam in 1969. Yucky. So, I was pregnant at the time and declined. But the reason that they asked me to do it was because I'd already been successful doing that with other business units three or four times. So, it's, I'm, I'm good at looking at the questions and keeping, I keep questioning until we get to the place where it makes sense. And I think that's super important for where we're headed. That's it.
Thank you. Going with the reverse order of the intros, Jim, you are next.
Uh, thank you. Once again, I, I agree with, with Bettina. This is a, this is a great group. It's been very educational over the last three nights to get to know all of you better and hear all of your positions. We all have to figure out who else we're voting for too. So, you know, this has been very, very educational. I think I bring a, something unique. I, I bring a, a long-term, local perspective to this group. I've seen a lot of ups and downs, seen a lot of changes in this town. I have strong connections throughout the community. And as the district is trying to rebuild trust and communication, I have, I, I really believe that I'm well-suited to do that through my experiences in business, in community, working for the city, different things. That is the most important thing, is building the trust and community support throughout the whole district that has been lacking up until now. And it's gonna be the biggest job for all of us, whoever is elected, to move forward on.
Thank you. Jonathan, that takes us to you.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I definitely think it's a great group of people and that, you know, that we're all, learned a lot about each other and everything. I will take a little different tact on this. I think you need people who have the experience that the time calls for right now. So, while I think everyone is a great person up here, I think that, you know, when you think about your vote, choose the people that you think the school needs right now and the district needs right now. We're having a new strategic plan. We're hiring a new superintendent. This person needs to come on board, deal with the situation that was not created by him, help manage that and get all that done. It was created by him.
Right.
Oh, but then we're sure you're hurt. That person, the new person. So, that needs to be taken care of. And so, you need somebody who can help with that process and that has experience and has been there and done that. And also, to fix the governance process, you need people who have been there and done that. So, I think that's what you should take in consideration. You know, I, I think I have a lot of that experience. I think you've been there and done that in almost everything that the school is facing challenges now, except for, I would say, definitely the part about, you know, the experts are the ones that need to solve the curriculum issues and all that. I think, actually think my position on that is the board needs to let the professionals take care of that. The board needs to work on developing the organization, making sure we have the funding, making sure the leadership is the right one, those kinds of things. And they need to let the teachers teach. So, that would be my suggestion and for how you vote. I hope you vote for me. If you don't vote for me, there are other people that have a lot of that experience, like Bettina just said, Katie as well. And so, it's important, I think, that you guys take that into consideration when you're thinking about what you're, the vote you have coming up. So, thank you very much, everyone, for coming. And thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, Patsy?
Reverse alphabet's tough. Curtis, I think you're one-year-old.
Well, again, I would just wanna thank everyone for a great past couple days. I think it's been great to get to know everybody. And I think that everyone sitting up here is very qualified to be on the next board. I think that one thing that we do need is someone who can listen. But not only just listen, we need someone who can execute. And I, I know that in every job that I've ever had, that I was, I executed new situations all the time. And I think that I actually, I listen. People come to me all the time because they know that I listen. So, I think that's really good. I also think I have the time. And I also have kids in the school. And I don't think that that's a necessity. But right now on the board, there's only one board member who has children in the school, and that's Dwayne. And I think that it's important that we have board members who have kids in this, in the, in the school, so that they have a pulse of what's happening every day throughout there. So, and I also think having a quick impact. We are in a place that we have some really big decisions to make. And we need to make a quick impact for our school and for our children and for our teachers. And I think I'm qualified to do all of that. And again, I think, you know, we, I'm sitting beside some great people. But it's something that I really, really would love to do. And I'm looking forward to seeing the outcome.
Jonathan, Katie?
Yeah. It's interesting that our valley's history began with, between the town of Independence and the town of Defiance down in Glenwood. We, we have a hard time with community. We are a bunch of independent people. We have very strong views in this community. We have very strong opinions. I think we need to tap that and work together to make a better community for the schools. I think we're asking to vote for two of us. I think there's great people on this board. It's not really about us. It's about the students. Think about who would be best for the students, not, not just qualities that we have. And ask yourself, what kind of community are we gonna create for them at our Aspen School District so that those students are successful? We have a lot of resources in this town. We need to partner up with everybody. We need to ask a lot of questions and bring the greater community into our school district. We're just not this campus over there that lights up a field every Friday night. We are, we are part of this town. We're the fabric of this town. In fact, AEF's website, I love it. It says, "We believe the entire Aspen community benefits from a strong public education system." I think all of us would echo that statement. I think I promise, we got some work to do. The board has some work to do. We need to define how we're gonna govern. We need to hire a new superintendent. We need to right some wrongs. And I promise, if elected, I will open up the channels of communication between the board and the students, board and teachers, the administration, parents, and to this greater community that we have here. We need you, Aspen, and we, you need us. I will study. I will learn. I will ask questions. And I will be available. And I will listen. Thank you, and I'd appreciate your vote.
Great. I'm last. So, also to echo, I am running alongside five other great people. And I think our community is really, really lucky to have three current great board members and two of us up there in November. We can't go wrong. And we only have great things going forward for us. My focus, and I think what the board and the community needs to remain focused on is the kids. It is all about educating our kids. And that means a lot of things. It's not just academics. It's socio-emotional issues. It's mental health issues. It's all of those things. And the, with the goal of creating great human beings who can go off into the world and be successful and happy and healthy adults. So, that is, that is fundamentally, fundamentally my focus. And it's not about my two kids that are, have been here forever and going through the district. It's about everybody's kids. So, I think it's really critical, as Patsy said, to have people who understand or have the pulse on what is going on and who will have kids in the district throughout their tenure on the board, which I will. I have a, the fundamental skillsets I bring are management experience, leadership experience, finance and strategic planning. I've done all this stuff. We didn't really get to a lot of it tonight. But it is something that I can hit the ground running with and I'm extremely comfortable with. And I think we have a lot of work to do out there. We do, we're starting from a great place, but we need to, to keep the nose to the grindstone and, and make sure that we're providing for our kids. I think the most important fundamental skillset of any elected official is the ability to listen. And I, I promise I will do that. And not just listen, but hear what, what is being said. So, I have the passion for this community. And I just, I hope that I have the opportunity to serve. And I thank everyone for coming tonight, everyone who is listening to this on TV. And thank you guys, Curtis and David, for, for this opportunity.
Thank you. Let's get a round of applause for our candidates, everyone. Thank you. Well, that will do it for tonight. We want to, again, thank our candidates for taking the time tonight and this week. They probably spent about eight hours the last three nights talking about this. And I think that's really helpful for our voters to better understand who is running and what we need in our school board. So, we appreciate that and, and your work with the kids. Again, we'd also like to thank our friends at Grassroots TV for airing the forum tonight. And they will keep it on their YouTube channel. Curtis and I will have it in our Facebook pages as well. So, you'll be able to see it. And again, to Picken County for the use of the chambers. That was very helpful for us tonight. If you did miss any of the forum, again, it will be on the YouTube page. It'll be on our Facebook pages as well. Ballots are in the mail now. If you don't get a ballot, probably by next week, you should get ahold of the Clerk's Office. And they are due again November 5th. So, again, thank you, everybody. My name is David Kraus from the Aspen Times, along with Curtis Wackerly of the Aspen Daily News. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, what are you guys doing to hurt us?